Let us pray. Our Father, we thank you for this nation. We thank you, Lord, for those who have served this nation in the military as well as in public service. And I do pray today that you will keep your hands upon this nation. And, Lord, bring a revival that'll sweep across this country and that will unify us as a nation. And, Father, I pray for Bradley County. I pray for all of our elected officials here. And I pray that you will always bless them and show your favor to them. And above all, give them favor with those that they serve, with wisdom to carry out their responsibilities in a way that will be a blessing to this county and to bring glory to you. And it's in one name we pray: Jesus Christ's name and amen.
Thank you, Pastor Green. Now, a report from our county mayor, Mayor Davis.
Hi, I'm Winston Bible.
Wait just a minute. We have got an eager mayor for a day today with us this afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. That's pretty funny because he didn't know if he wanted to talk or not. Now, he can't wait to talk. This is Winston Bible. He's a third grader from Black Fox Elementary School. His mom's with us today, and he's also in Ms. Bennett's class. And he is very anxious. He's, as usual, been on the tour throughout the Bradley County offices and been very excited to meet some of the elected officials. And he's here today to give us a report, then I have a couple of things for you. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Winston Bible. I think Bradley County is a great place to live. I'm excited to be mayor for the day in Oregon or God or Kansas.
Thank you, Winston, Mr. Bible. You did get that, Erica, a third grader from Black Fox, right?
Yes.
Okay. You have a resolution in front of you that I would respectfully have someone to put on the agenda for next week. We've already talked to finance about budget amendments, but this is where we bid the roof for the annex. This is awarding the bid to Willoughby Roofing. We had two bids. The other one was about forty-five, fifty thousand dollars more than this one. This is the same company that replaced the roof here on the courthouse. Thank you, I appreciate it. And you heard reports of water pouring in the justice center before we put a new roof on that section of the justice center Friday. We had water pouring in the annex. But we have bid it, so it'll be a while. They've told us of their concern about materials and so forth, so it will be a while. But I want to get the contract to them as soon as possible so that time can start. Yes, sir.
I was just going to mention, I'm sorry, does everybody hear me? I want to make sure. On this, with the annex, just so everybody knows, that we're going to use a tad bit of the rescue money for this, not all of it, but some of it. I think what, sixty thousand of that? So, about two-seventy-six, we're going to use some of that federal money to pay for it because the bid came in a little bit higher than what was the budget.
Yeah, as everything right now bids, not a good time to be bidding. And I hope to not bid anything else for a while. You also have a resolution in front of you that I'm sure you will have questions about as you read through it. This is not new debt. People say that probably here in a minute, but this is where letters of credit, I believe, have expired. Chris Besler with Cumberland Securities is here to explain that. And after he does so, I respectfully ask someone to put that on the agenda next week too because those letters of credit are expiring. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris Besler, Cumberland Securities, Knoxville, Tennessee. In front of you, you have a resolution which pertains to the county's Series VII P1 loan, which is with Regions Bank. These loans require ongoing maintenance. Every three to five years, the bank agrees to a new term to hold the bond issuer the loan. And at the end of that three- to five-year term, we just have to go through a normal process to renew it. That helps keep the credit cost low by doing that. The bank, in going out three or five years instead of the original twenty years of the loan, is able to provide a lower credit cost to the county on doing so. Additionally, this time around, one thing that's different is this loan was originally set to the index of LIBOR, the London Interbank Offered Rate. That index is going away as of June 30th next year. Federal regulators are all over banks to try to get out of LIBOR agreement so that way it will have a clean phase-out and local entities will not be negatively impacted by that. Regions Bank, the holder of this loan, has put forth an alternative solution to this that we've been doing with clients all over. And it would switch it from the London Interbank Offered Rate, or LIBOR, to the Bloomberg Short-Term Yield Index, also known as BSBY as its acronym, B-S-B-Y. This is another index that is, there's two or three indexes that are set to replace LIBOR, and this is one of the more prominent indexes that has taken off to replace LIBOR. So it is our recommendation as your municipal advisor that you accept the proposal from Regions Bank that would extend the current expiration date of June 1, 2022. It would take it out to June 1 of 2025 and at the same time convert it from LIBOR to the Bloomberg Short-Term Yield Index. And then with that, I can answer any questions that you have. And just to reiterate, as the mayor said, this is not new debt. This is just maintenance of existing debt.
Do you have any questions?
I said I would take it down myself.
Mr. Blake?
Hey, thank you for being here. So, I understand the Bloomberg index and there are other ones. Why the Bloomberg index? It's prominent, you're right.
Yeah, it's a prominent one. And so far, it seems that the Bloomberg Short-Term Yield Index is where banks have been more comfortable hedging their capital on the backside of their loan. And so, for whatever reason, the banks that we've been working with, whether it's US Bank, Bank of America, Regions Bank, First Horizon, most of the banks that are in this market have chosen to go with the Bloomberg Short-Term Yield Index.
So, if it was, I mean, Regions is saying that's the index that they want to use, right? It's not Cumberland Securities?
Correct, yeah.
So, they're basically devising other clients to do that. Everybody who's in the LIBOR situation?
Correct. And we actually solicited from Regions Bank multiple index proposals. So they submitted, in addition to the Bloomberg Short-Term Yield Index, they submitted a proposal based on the secured overnight funding rate, also known as SOFR, and also on the SIFMA rate, which is a tax-exempt rate. Both of those other alternatives resulted in a higher cost of funding for the county. And so, and that's how they're doing it because they're trying to direct people to do it.
I just wondered what the value it had was. What's the differential between those indexes? I'm trying to remember what the other one was, but it's coming from the originator, I guess, or the merchant, right?
Correct. And compared to where the county is right now on LIBOR, it drops the interest rate from where you are right now about fourteen basis points, point one-four percent.
That leads me to my next question. And if you don't mind to be a little bit more in-depth on when you refer to lost credit cost in your statements. You mentioned a few seconds ago, maybe I misunderstood you. Lost credit cost, okay, that's a new term for me.
So, when the bank goes out and they make a loan, so for instance, your loan was twenty years long, and instead of making a capital commitment for the entire twenty years, they make these commitments in three, typically three-year segments. Sometimes they'll go out five years. So they'll make a commitment for three years to provide credit, four-year loan, to where you don't have to worry about anything during that term. At the end of that three-year term, they go through what's called a renewal, where they just extend it another three years typically. No changes take place, and you don't see us have to come before you. The reason that they go on those shorter periods, three years typically, is because it allows them to have a lower cost of capital, which means you have a lower cost of credit.
So this benefits them as well?
They would be neutral. It makes it to where, if they go out longer, they're going to make themselves be cost-neutral on that, and the cost would then be passed on to the county. And so, we don't recommend going out longer than these three- to five-year increments because we don't want the county to have to pay the higher cost of the capital.
Okay. I'll get to that, I guess. I mean, when we entered into this knowing that they would do this, right?
Correct.
Well, that's all I have about this, but yeah, another question for you because you are, you handle all of our bonds. So, is well-publicized, well-known, the feds are increasing rates, and the anticipation is that they're going to do it three more times before the end of this year, conservatively, maybe even more, but at least three. But I think, Mayor, in terms of, forty percent of our debt on the bond side is variable. I guess at a high level, or as much detail as you would like, as we get ready to go into budget here this summer, how do you think that will affect our variable bonds with our rates? Because they were very, very attractive. It was almost free money until a certain extent, and now it's not going to be.
Correct.
But we budgeted above, I get the gap between the two.
Right. You know, this past budget, this past budget year, we had a budget rate of about three percent on this loan. We would probably recommend increasing that to four, four-and-a-half percent as a budget rate. You have about twenty-four percent of your outstanding debt is in unhedged variable, so it's pure variable rate. So it would really only affect about a quarter percent, a quarter, I'm sorry, of the outstanding debt balance. And right now, one of the things that we're seeing is, and this starts to get a little bit more technical, but the tax-exempt municipal debt is trading on par with treasury debt. That's not a normal scenario. Normally, you have tax-exempt debt trade at about seventy percent of where the treasuries are. So what we would expect to see happen is as the Fed continues to increase rates, the municipals will no longer go up as much because they've already been penalized. So the municipal tax-exempt debt has already been penalized a bit more. They've gone up and increased faster than treasuries have.
You address, or answer my question, that is that we probably do need to adjust our gap between what we budgeted and what the actual projection's going to be. Last question. As you know, we took out two bonds for what we call the PI Center. We did that in two because of the timing of the ten million dollars that the financial institutions get, that ten million dollar credit on their side. Since this is not new debt, that doesn't affect that ten million benchmark at all, does it?
Correct. Yeah, and those were done in 2020, 2021, so you're clear, even if you were to do.
We did this, though, I still have two million available, so I don't anticipate doing any bonds this year, but yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Carr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Blake stole most of my funding tonight. I am concerned about the amount of variable-rate bonds that we have with already two rate increases by the Federal Reserve, and as Mr. Blake said, there will be three more. What is your opinion on turning or converting these variable rates over to fixed rate?
Well, that's always the philosophy of the issuer on how much variable to take on. Right now, the county is well within the normal bounds from the rating agencies on how much variable-rate debt it has, in the twenty-five to thirty percent range. That in addition to the fund balance it has in its debt service fund. If you were to convert all or a portion of it to fixed rate, right now you'd be looking at above three percent, closer to three and a quarter, three and a half percent with the remaining average life that's left on this loan. With the variable rate right now, you're still under probably about one and a quarter percent. And so even with three more rate increases, and let's just say they're each fifty basis points, so let's say you go up another one and a half percent there, you're still looking at coming in under that, under three percent. And then if rates go back down, say here in another two or three years, then you get the benefit from that versus locking yourself in for the next ten years at three and a quarter, three and a half percent.
Well, thank you very much. That clear up that quite a bit. The other, you mentioned the, we're well within the range. What is the range, I guess, to maintain the bond rate? It's critical that we maintain that bond rate.
Absolutely, it is. The general range that Moody's and S&amp;P and FID, which the county doesn't use, that they like to see, and they won't publish this, they kind of will go off the record with you. And it also depends on who the issuer is. So for an entity like Bradley County, who has good fund balance, you're a county, not a small city, you know, it's harder for people to lose your tax base, they are much more comfortable in that twenty to thirty-five, even up to forty percent if you've got fund balance to offset it. And the county does have fund balance to offset it as well, so that's not even factored into that twenty-five percent purely variable number that we talked about earlier.
And what is our present range? You said thirty, thirty-five percent is what we're at right now?
You have twenty-five percent purely, pure variable rate.
And then built into that, is there a fund balance that will add more cushion to that?
That does not even take into account your fund balance. So when you take into account your fund balance, that helps decrease that.
Thank you very much.
It's a matched asset likely.
Commissioner Carr?
Mr. Blake? If I may, not all of our debt is in bonds, though. What you're referring to is how much is in bonds. We also have some other debt that's not bonds.
You have leases.
We have inter-fund loans and so much.
Yeah, the inter-fund loan, you have, the school system has the energy lease that it took out as well, and that also would decrease the percent of variable that the county has as well. That's correct.
Commissioner Carr?
This may be a question for the mayor. What is included in this? When did we originally take this out, and what did this money go to? Do you know?
I'm sorry? She's talking about the resolution, Blake, wasn't she?
No, the total amount that we're talking about, what was it originally taken out for?
The original loan was taken out in 2017. And do you remember what this one was for?
It's a, it gets confusing because it's a combination of things. When we refinanced, so we put them together. Yeah, I mean, most of them were school bonds. That would be safe to say, most of them were school bonds. But I think we took some of the GO bonds from the jail and the juvenile center, and they were put together when we refinanced. But the majority of our debt, like eighty percent of it, is schools. Does that kind of answer your question?
Yes, it does.
When you look at the papers he's showing me, it lists them as GO bonds or school bonds. And the GO bonds are basically jail, juvenile center, and fire department.
Okay. So it was taken out in 2017, and we're hoping to pay it off by 2037?
By 2037.
Is the last payment?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. My pleasure. You're talking.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Unless someone has a question for me.
If you have any questions, I'll put that on the deck. Our reports from committees and our districts will start to my left. Commissioner Warner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The seventh district's in great shape. I do want to say how disappointed I am. I think many of my constituents found the low turnout that we had in the election. Mr. Blake has mentioned several times the importance of the election and the fact that the taxpayer has already, already paid for a large turnout in an election, and I think we had twenty percent in the election. So, I'm, my people in my district are just kind of concerned that the numbers turned out for the important elections were disappointing. So I get to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Mr. Rip?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I want to welcome Josh Rogers. He'll be sitting in this seat, and congratulations, Josh. I see behind him Josh Taylor, a new school board member, and I don't want to leave Josh out. And my next thing would be for the mayor. Mayor, you mentioned this in finance the other day. Would you mind expanding a little bit just for the general public? A lot of them didn't hear the finance about, we had an accident with the ambulance, and where we are on number, we were already somewhat short. I think we were more short on personnel than we were the ambulances. But if you could explain that just for the public, please.
Yeah, of course, the ambulance insurance did say was total, so that's in the works to get that back, which will be replacing it in time. We still got two ambulances in this year's budget that have not been delivered, hopefully this month or June. We did have an ambulance that had a small accident a few months ago that will be back in service this week. And of course, immediately, we had a backup ambulance for it. But yeah, what I was saying was, more importantly than all of that, was we're short of two employees here for a period of time. Hopefully, they'll be back soon.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Carr?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you. Things are better in the sixth than expected. I just want to thank everyone that did come out to vote in the sixth district. Elections are hard, and you work hard, and you don't always get the results that you want or expect, but I want to thank all of the friends that stood beside me and helped me run that campaign. And you also kind of realize who is not for you, and sometimes they might be sitting around next to you, but you find out that they benefit themselves and not the district as a whole. So, thank you to everybody that came out, and we have three months of work to do, and so it's time for us to get back to work and finish some of the things that we have started. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Chairman. Sixth district's doing well.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Slater?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This Saturday will be the last tire cleanup for this budget year at exit twenty. We do have some young men, twenty to twenty-five, committed to come and help. We will meet at exit twenty around the lake area at eight-thirty a.m. on Saturday morning.
Commissioner Goines?
I'd like to thank the fifth district for four more years. I appreciate their votes and the fifth district getting some more sidewalks down in Dalton Park and all over, and they're carrying up the road to the losses.
That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Goines. Commissioner Thompson?
Fourth district's in good shape.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Carr? Commissioner Carr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second district's doing great, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Pete?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Tim Mason, on Hawk Street, did you get a chance to go out and look at all that dump that they've been dumping?
I'm working on it.
And I also like to thank Tim for cleaning up APD forty. That's not part of his area he's supposed to clean up, but he does. He goes behind all these dump trucks that it comes out of. They're untarped vehicles quite a bit. So, he always takes care of that and makes everything as best he can with those. I think you've got two trucks now going all the time, two liter cruisers. I know Mike helps him with that, so I appreciate that. And we are working on the old power line drive issue. Tim is trying to get the guy to clean up his concrete dump site that he did on the side of the mountain there. And then we have several other areas that I'll be sending to Commissioner Tim. And just for the rest, so everybody knows, we're not lame ducks sitting up here. We still do have three months of hard work that we have been working on for the last four years. Infrastructure is one of those. So we will do the best that we can to get as much as we can get done in that timeframe. I do appreciate everyone that came out to vote. I am very saddened that a lot of people didn't feel the need to come out and vote, whether they thought some of the people on the ballot were jokes or not. It's no joke when it comes to your right to vote, and you should exercise that right to vote every chance you get because people did die for you to have that freedom to do so. So I appreciate everyone that did finally come out to vote, and we will get to work up here. There were three of us, the hardest workers that you could imagine. You did vote off of your hardest workers, in my opinion. And then, of course, some of you won't be coming back for other reasons because you chose other paths. But I'll miss all of you at the end of August. But it has been a great ten years to serve Bradley County, long tenure. Probably this last four years has been the longest. But we will get to work and do what we always do, and that's work for Bradley County and serve you, as we always have done. So I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Mr. Pete. Mr. Blake? Commissioner Carr forgot something.
Yeah, I forgot. This lady would never forgive me if I didn't bring it up. Jenkins Road, I'm going to refer to the road committee. I believe that's the appropriate place. This property adjoins the west side of Coil Run subdivision. They have a drainage problem, the water running from Coil Run onto their property. They allege that the flat does not reflect any drainage across their property, which they get flooded apparently. And I'd like to bring this to the attention of the road committee, along with the other in the area of Hilton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carr. Did you get that, Commissioner Mason?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Moynihan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I needed a change. I will not be here next Monday. Had that been already planned, so if somebody else will put that resolution for the bond issue, I appreciate that. I apologize, but we already had plans. In the same regard, I want to congratulate, this week you're going to have a lot of seniors walk across that stage, and a lot of parents thrilled to see those seniors walk across that stage. My wife and I, one of them, and we're going to send them off. But I do want to congratulate all those seniors they had to go through. I think they would have been sophomores during COVID, I believe, if my number's correct. So, congratulations, and I wish them all very well. Last, speaking of elections, you know, that is, I think it's passions to all of our, but I had the opportunity and the honor to serve the Election Commission. Doing a quick survey of how many people we have sitting in here, and if you look at the percentage of people who participated was the percentage, or the total number who could have participated, I'm not going to single anybody out, but if you take three individuals here, they did, three individuals just made the decision for everybody in this room. That gives you a little perspective of what just happened. Three individuals out of everybody in this room decided what everybody would do and what not do. So hopefully, we can encourage more people in the next go-round. August is the next go-round. That'll be our state and federal primary, and then in November, it'll be the general. So hopefully, more people will participate in our elections. It costs us about forty-five thousand dollars in the budget to process and hold an election, whether it's the primary here in May or in August or whatnot. So, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I was wanting to...
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. Commissioner Oliver?
Yeah, just a couple of items. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone in the second district that voted for. Tom and I both looked like our numbers are pretty much the same. Obviously, the same people voted for both of us, Commissioner Carr. Then the same people voted against us, I guess. But anyway, pay the mind, I'd just like to encourage all the people that won or lost elections to get your signs up off the side of the road. I know the county's starting to mow, and I see a lot of signs still out there along the road, and it really hurts those landlords if, or could be dangerous if someone hits those signs and throws that metal in which way. Speaking of signs also, I'd like to encourage anyone up in the drawbridge, if you see one of my signs. Seems like some of mine grew legs. They weren't where they're supposed to be, so obviously, they're growing around up there. Some of them are, so someone have to see one of mine, please give me a call, and I'll be glad to come pick it up. And then if you remember, many, many years ago, President Obama made one comment, "Elections have consequences." Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Alford. Commissioner Hughes?
Well, this is before Commissioner Alford. Actually, while I was picking up signs, I ran into a constituent. That constituent asked me a simple question, and I will repeat it exactly what it was meant. They said, "I want to know why landfill is not accepting illegal tender." Apparently, they're not accepting cash again, and they're really, I don't know, Mayor Davis, if you could speak to them, see if they can change it again. But it is definitely causing an issue out in my area, and I'm sure others do. But other than that, you are correct, elections do have to...
illegal tender." Apparently, they are not accepting cash again, and they're really, I don't know if Mayor Davis, if you could speak to them, see if they can change it again. But it is definitely causing an issue out in my area, and I'm sure others do. But other than that, you are correct, elections do have consequences, the same as votes when you're up there voting. I will miss everyone that is here that will be leaving because I've enjoyed working with all of you. I truly have. I may not agree every time on every political issue, but we're not up there to vote for because we like somebody or don't like somebody. It just so happens that we all get along. And in the end, we all get along. And you don't have to agree with someone or disagree with them till I. Again, I will miss you all. But I've got three months to be with you, so I'm looking forward to the time that we do get together.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's it. Thank you, Commissioner Thompson.
Since you mentioned the landfill, I've got a couple complaints from last week, I guess, talking about they will not receive cash in or it's all credit card or whatever. But you know, when I read this, what's on this money says, "This note is legal tender for all debts, public and private." So I, you know, that's a big problem for a lot of people. They don't carry a credit card. And they, I've had three complaints in the last two, three weeks here. Just don't count that, that wouldn't take cash. We need to check into that and see why they won't. And I'm sure that they have reasons for that, but we, it's something that we need to follow up on anyway.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Mr. Epperson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And everything's doing good in the first district. But I'd like to take this time in this moment to appreciate the citizens in the first district. And actually, everybody in Bradley County for giving me this opportunity to start these last four years. And we, like Commissioner Pete said, we have about three or four more months left, and we will use that time to move our county forward. I've enjoyed working with the fellow commissioners. And I always think, I'm a firm believer, that everything happens for a reason. And I think God has different plans for me. I think that the three that will be leaving here, he's decided, God has decided that he doesn't want us in this environment anymore because it's not an easy environment. And the oppositions that each, all three of us had to endure during the election process, a lot of things happened in the night, and things, signs and things got put up in the middle of the night. And but you know, that, that character and the character that those people, that did not reflect the character of those three, it reflected the characters of their actions. So in the low turnout, there was a low turnout in the city. But I do appreciate how close my election was, even after all that opposition that I endured. I'm appreciative of those citizens that did vote, did come out and vote. And it showed that, you know, they weren't able to convince the vast, what, pretty much about 50% of the citizens in the first district. So I do appreciate that. And I look forward to working for the next three or four months. And I'm thankful and I feel blessed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pete?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did forget to mention, if it is possible to go ahead and schedule the landfill committee that we had postponed for May the 23rd, if that will give everybody time to get them back in here on their request from us. Everybody look at your calendar and make sure that's good. I know it's before budget, but that's the next work session Monday. And if we could do that...
Is that timed, Pete?
Yeah. Would that be a 7:00 p.m.?
Yes.
If that is. How much time do you think we'll need, Mayor?
Probably say 6:00, because he said...
Okay. All right, 6:00 p.m.
Anything else, Commissioner Pete?
And if you have any questions that did not get asked, or I think we gave them a few questions to come back and report to us on, just make sure you get them to Lori so that we can get them to them.
Mr. Cracker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do want to add on to this landfill thing. I call it breach of trust. As I recall, the gentleman coming in here telling us that he would take cash, he would prefer not to, that he would take cash. To me, that's a promise. A little bit like Commissioner Thompson here. I don't carry a credit, I carry but don't use them. I use cash a lot. I don't use the landfill that much because I have my stuff picked up. But it's a breach of trust, and that has to be directed at somebody because he stood at that podium and told us that. And I'd like to keep that in mind when we deal with him. You're going to say something, mean what you say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cracker. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move into the assembly. Let me, Mr. Epperson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess, I would like to kind of update everyone on where we are with this resolution that I had pulled and actually will be considering in a vote next week. And anyhow, I wanted to kind of, on your desk, I think there's a revised revision number two. And based on some of the questions that were posed at the last work session, they highlighted in red, trying to answer some of those questions. And basically, we took, I took the opportunity to pull that resolution too because some of the commissioners had questions instead on trying to achieve this $7.5 million infrastructure. It has to have technical assistance to be able to provide a plan to TDEC to try to achieve the $7.5 million. So if, you know, basically, if you don't have a plan, you're not going to receive the $7.5 million infrastructure. So I've asked the engineers and I've asked Crystal to come in today to help try to answer some of those questions. And at first, I guess we, there were some questions about the resolution. I think one of the commissioners were concerned that Cleveland Utilities' name was not on there and the other utilities were not. The only reason, and I stated before, the only reason that Cleveland Utility was listed in that resolution is because basically, that is one of the first services that the engineers have to provide. They have to basically figure out if we are going to go with Plan A, which is what they would prefer to do, within the utility master plan. That cost us $75,000 to come up with, and it took about three years to do it, hard work, a lot of meetings, which we can receive $56,250 back if we can show the one we do, if we do go ahead and agree to try to get the $7.5 million to, for the first time in history, to try to put some infrastructure, you know, land infrastructure, some major infrastructure that will take us into the next generations to come. But anyhow, if we can show that the plan that we would present to try to achieve that $7.5 million, we would receive back $56,250 for this plan. And also, the, let me add too, before we move on, if we did vote to get higher assistance from the engineering firm to amend the, the original contract for the master sewer utility plan that Crystal had put together in that resolution, we would also be refunded. And I believe, and I also gave you all this slide or PowerPoint presentation last week, and if you had the time to review that, you would see, and I pointed it out on one of the slides in the current meeting before, that, and it's my understanding that 90% of that $35,000 that would be voting on next week would also be refundable, and then the other 10% would be once the plan is approved. So, but keep in mind that the $56,250 that we would be reimbursed and the $35,000 we would be reimbursed would come out of the $7.5 million. So, but anyhow, and that's good that they would be willing to reimburse us for what we've already worked really hard on over the years and put in place. But at first, I'd like to, we had some questions. And Crystal had worked really hard on this resolution, and me and her had conversations. She had conversations with the engineers. Basically, while we left office seats, we didn't want to name any utilities. We were all under the understanding that there was five utilities where, you know, if you would have sat in all the numerous meetings when we came up with this utility master plan, we know exactly how many utility companies we have. And I'm going to let her have a tour first and let her explain to why she didn't want to put names of any utilities there because she basically wanted us to have the option to do what if we decided to move forward and try to get this $7.5 million. We'd have the option to be able to use any utility company if we wanted to. But Crystal, you could go ahead and then entertain any questions that any of the commissioners would want to ask you about the resolution.
Sure. Yeah, I think the first draft that we saw, the mayor, I think, was actually the first person to question of why did it just reference Cleveland Utilities. So I spoke to Mr. Cosby about that issue because I wanted to make sure that we were getting the services that we needed and wanted in order to submit the plan. And the information that I got from Mr. Cosby was Cleveland Utilities is the area where we need to negotiate with them about capacity. The other utility providers, to put it simply, the work is not going to be required because we believe we're already there, pretty much. So probably all that would be required is to get formalized that agreement. Whereas with Cleveland Utilities, there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. So the reason why Cleveland Utilities is addressed in here specifically is because they anticipate, know they're going to have to do work. And that's what you see listed, which is negotiation with Cleveland Utilities for sewer capacity. We did add, though, some language that they would help us some on the other utilities as well. But the reason why they're not in there is because there's not as much work to be done on that. So to me, we don't need to spend money and resources and pay them to negotiate when utilities are already in agreement about capacity.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Primer, so in essence, the other utilities are already accepting wastewater from, correct?
No, we just, there's not going to be issues, and they probably can address this better than I can, but there's not going to be issues with capacity because they've already, at least verbally, and our understanding is there aren't going to be issues. So we would just need to formalize those agreements. Cleveland Utilities, though, there's a lot of work that we still will have to do to get, to get to where we need to get to in those service areas.
Commissioner Pete?
Also, just to help clarify that, the reason you don't negotiate with, say, Ocoy Utilities, they don't have the same sewer system. I know everybody thinks everybody's the same. These utilities do not all have the same thing. We don't negotiate with Ocoy Utility for sewer capacity because they don't have sewer capacity. They only take a fluid from their systems only. Cleveland Utilities has a gravity-fed sewer system. They take solids and water. Ocoy Utility only takes water. So there's no reason to go to Ocoy Utility to ask for sewer capacity because they don't have a sewer facility like that. Theirs is a totally different system. So that would be one of the reasons that we don't negotiate with the other ones. We, Cleveland Utilities is who we have, they're the only sewer out there that would do that. So they're the only ones that we have to negotiate with sewer capacity on. And also, so the $35,000 that is in this resolution, though, is reimbursable. Is that correct?
You can ask him, maybe.
Yes, sure.
Yes, and if you were to review the PowerPoint presentation, it has all that documentation in it. And they can also talk about it too, once they come to the floor. The, my understanding is, what I read on one of the slides shows that we put up here on the big screen, that 90% is refundable at first, and then the other 10% maybe have the completion of the, and I may be wrong, I don't know, but I'll let them speak on that. And...
Yeah, ultimately, all of it.
Yeah. And then also, we also, like I said, too, we can get $56,250 back of what we spent already on the utility master plan itself.
Sure. So why would we look at spending $35,000 to an engineering firm when I would assume, I could be incorrect, that Cleveland Utilities, Ocoy, Eastside, any other districts that we choose to work with would have engineers on their staff? So it's a lot, why would we spend this and not work directly with the utilities? And I have three questions before you leave me.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, basically, the utility companies, the master utility plan is not their plan. It's not no one's plan, but any utility plan. This is our plan. And all along, we've talked about the importance of water lines. That was our number one thing. I mean, I think I can speak for the rest of the commission, but that was our number one thing. That's not going to be, this is not going to be something that any utility company is going to be jumping up and down over and wanting to do our plan. So if you want to do, you know, some, one of their plans, it could be completely different than our plan. This is the plan that the county commission put together. And the important thing, number one, it was to put in water lines in all the areas that this master utility plan has pointed out. Number two, septic tanks are repaired. That's not going to be in any of your five utility districts, utilities, companies' plan.
It's not in this plan either.
Exactly what I'm...
It's not in this plan either.
Well, the plan has not been created yet.
It specifically says in this plan that creation and administration of septic system repair rehabilitation program is excluded from this.
And I don't know which one you're referring to.
I'm talking about this plan right here that was laid at my seat. When you talk about...
Well, we'll have to let the engineers speak on that.
Feel free to come to the podium and speak on that then.
We will. Is this the right time?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your questions. Yes. Let's see. So let's go to the first one.
Something?
No.
No? So can you just answer the question without going through your presentation? Because it is specifically called out that that is not included here.
Gary, can you speak to that?
Yeah. Yes, it's a good question. And the reason that it's not in this particular authorization, this particular authorization is directed at making a viable application by the deadline, which is November 1st. So that's what all of this is trying to do, is get an application in by the deadline to be able to get you the full amount of the funding. Now, as part of what will be in the application, various line items. There'll be a line item for septic repair restoration system. So there's still work to be done. There's also a line item that will be to actually create that program that doesn't exist and to provide during the course of the funding period, the administration. Those will be line items in the application as well. So that they're not part of the application. And so that's why they're not...
But they're available with additional compensation.
Yes. But we were focusing right now just to get you to the application. Now, assuming all that is eligible to be funded, and we're making that assumption that it is, once confirmed by TDEC, there's a lot of things to actually implement, all the projects that we would put in the application. And so some of those things would be to actually create this program.
For additional compensation.
Yes, it would be. It'll be different. Just like if there's an actual project, there's got to be planning, engineering associated just for that project. This would be the things associated with, if you want to call it septic program, a project. These are equivalent to, like I say, the engineering and the contract administration of the project. But they're not part of the application. So that's why they're not here. They would be in the application as line items to be funded to do those things. Is that...
Yes, thank you. And then my next question, and maybe this is to the mayor, and is this not being vet for additional engineering firms because it's an amendment to the original $85,000 that we spent? That's all my questions for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Pete?
Also, Cleveland Utilities engineers aren't familiar with this. It would take them three years or more to get up to the point we're at unless they took their engineering that we just paid for and used it to move ahead with this new application to get the $7.5 million. So we've got $7.5 million laying out there that we can get... 7.5 million. So we've got $7.5 million laying out there that we can get if we spend 35,000 more, which is reimbursable with the same firm, and we're not losing time because we don't have much time. I think the deadline is coming up. It's in November?
Yes.
So with that being said, I mean, I'm happy with this engineering firm and everything they've done so far. So I don't see a problem with moving forward with them. Plus, Cleveland Utilities wouldn't want this dropped in their lap, plus they are not the same kind of engineering firm.
Commissioner, have we at least reached out to the other utilities just to make sure that they're not interested in doing this?
In private conversations with all of them, they don't do this. This is not their forte. They, yeah, they're not interested. That's just in private conversations, me with two of them. The other companies, I don't even know. I think they're just, I've reached out to Eastside with them.
Mr. Parker.
Mayor Davis, I know that you've seen this. Have you reached out to make sure that they're not interested in doing this before we move forward?
I don't know if it's answered your question or not, but we have met with Cleveland Utilities, Ocoy Utilities, Hiwasi Utilities. They all have preliminary plans on how they would like to spend portions of this seven and a half million dollars working with their own engineers. She's right, they're not used to doing the application because, but they are used to working with the development district and do those applications. Meeting Cleveland Utilities, I think it's fairly safe to say that they're not interested in sort of, they're still saying that. So at some point, we gotta go with that assumption and move on. But the other two, Ocoy and Hiwasi Utilities, Hiwasi is looking at upgrading their existing facilities to supply more water to both Cleveland and Ocoy. So that's what they would be interested in doing, and they have plans, preliminary plans to do that. Ocoy is looking at upgrading their treatment facility so they can do more sewer outside the city limits, and they have plans to do that. So that's what their plans lie. Our challenge is getting, taking those two plans and putting them in one application. Keep in mind, this is the seventh bucket that I told you about earlier on, but the state decided rather than send it to us like they did the other ARP buckets and keep it simple, I think they felt like they didn't trust counties to spend it wisely working with their utilities, so they decided to keep it and grant it out. That grant has a lot of stipulations in it that we've gotta jump through the hoops to get to. But the utilities, their engineering, and their development district is the other option. I'm not speaking against what's before you today, but that's how we would normally apply for CBDG grants as I often talk about. Is that kinda in a roundabout way, answer your question there?
Mr. P.
Mayor, however, the CBD grant writers, the guys that we always use to try to get our grants, they're not familiar with this either, and it would take them at least two to three years to catch up to where we're at to make this application that they've already done, and they're not gonna yet let them use their master utility plan to create an application. I wouldn't if I just, if I had just created that. It still would take any other engineering firm three years to catch up to get us an application, except by November.
Again, I don't mean to be speaking for or against what's before you, but we've applied for many TDEC grants in the past. They're all different, they're all unique, they're all very complicated. It makes them feel powerful and national. The difference in this one is it's non-competitive, which means we know what we're gonna get if we jump through all the hoops. I'm hesitant because I realize it's just six months or five and a half months, but on a normal million-dollar CBDG grant, we might have two months to get it done. Granted, this is different, but it's still TDEC grants that we're applying for. They're treating it as a TDEC grant even though it's ARP money that went through the state.
Mr. Hughes.
Let's have one question. One, I thought that the part of this was going to be setup requirements for the septic repair. I didn't know that was gonna be another additional cost to do that. I assume there'll be another 35,000. The other question I have, though, is if we have one survey that's already been done by the company, but I've soon done basically what is the same, drove around, got a survey, and everything you'd know so you'd know where the growth was really going, I don't see reason in doing another survey on the same survey that we've already paid, it was 75,000 towards. So I don't, I don't see the justification for the extra 35,000.
If we could go through a brief presentation of the TDEC American Rescue Plan program, and then we can also go through the questions that you guys have asked that Lori had sent to us, and then we can even go through the amendment to our contract that talks about the work that we've proposed on the project selection, the further work that's needed there, and then the applications to TDEC. I think it may answer a lot of questions. And then we could, of course, answer any other questions you have. Would that be okay?
I think that would be a good idea.
Okay. Well, and thank you for taking the time to be here and discuss this further. Thank you, Mayor Davis, and thank you, Mayor for the day, Mayor Bible. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
What we're mostly talking about today is the seven and a half million dollars on about the oh, sixth or seventh line there that's available to Bradley County through the TDEC ARP funds. And I'll see if I can do this, Lori. So the local funds that were directly deposited from the federal government is the one large bucket, and I think y'all earmarked six and a half million for utilities. And then you have the state fiscal recovery funds, the TDEC ARP funds over on the right, and that's what we're talking about today. Then you've got the seven and a half million dollars that you'll have to apply by November the 1st to be eligible, and if you don't, you miss that money. So, a couple of things to point out. The application may include multiple projects, and the total funding available to the county is the sum of that seven and a half million, plus there is a co-funding requirement. In Bradley County, it's 25%. So it's based on your county's ability to pay. Some very poor counties, it's 15%, some counties that are very well off, it's 35%. They have to match. And so, but that, that match, that 20% can come from a various range of sources. It can come from the money you've already spent that's gone towards engineering. It can come from the bucket of money that came directly deposited from the federal government. You can use that money that you've already received to go towards your match so that you're effectively out of pocket for nothing, and you've got the seven and a half plus another, maybe 1.8, for a total of a little over $9 million of projects that y'all can fund. Water, sewer, septic systems can absolutely be a part of it, and stormwater projects also. We haven't discussed that, but that's one of the things that you can fund with it. It makes no difference to us. It's the county's prerogative where that money is spent. If it was all spent towards septic, or all towards water, or a portion towards each, you know, we, we work for Bradley County. And so, you know, whatever Bradley County chooses to fund, we would try to use those funds in the most efficient way to fund that work. So this is, this is the timeline for the application. As Mayor Davis said, it's a non-competitive grant. A lot of these grants, you're competing with Bledsoe County or another county. In this case, the county has a lot of say-so in what they fund. Once you partner with a utility, it becomes a collaborative project, and there's a, there's a few strings attached. We'll talk about that, but you still have the option to fund a majority of what you would like to fund. So this is the ability-to-pay index. That's how they figure out how much your match is or your co-funding obligation is that we talked about. When you collaborate with a utility, and we'll go through an example in a minute, you get a 5% reduction in your co-funding obligation. So that goes from 25% down to 20. Save you some money. Here are the types of projects, again, that are, that are able to be funded. Drinking water, which is, as you talked about, maybe the county's highest priority. We've identified a lot of drinking water projects a commissioner has used in our plan. So here's, here are drinking water, here are projects that we're aware of where you can, there are unserved roads and unserved residents, and we can extend a main out here and serve these residents. One of the things, and Gary will talk about it further, that's in our proposal, is there's still some work to be done to make sure that if, you know, if the county chooses to extend a main down a road, that, you know, is that the best one? I think there's some that we know, boy, it's gonna make sense to try and extend a main here. As we get into trying to select between, you know, several different projects that may appear to be similar, let's do a survey. Let's survey the residents. Let's talk to folks and find out how many people would or would not tie onto it if there's a large tract of land. Is somebody open to developing, you know, somebody looking to develop that, like they would want a water main there, you know. Let's look at a lot of factors and figure out which one it makes sense and try to rank that, bring that back to Bradley County, and again, give you guys the information so that y'all can select which projects you would like to fund. I think there were a couple of questions about this. It's very important to understand the application is made by the county. The county is the applicant. So even if it's a project, let's say it's a new water line and it's in Ocoy Utilities area that the county would like to fund. Ocoy can't make that application. The application has to be made by the county in collaboration with Ocoy. We have included time in this proposal and the amendment for that coordination with Ocoy Utility or whichever utility it may be, make sure they're on board, and they literally will have to write a letter of support of this project. So even though the negotiation for sewer isn't included, that wouldn't be needed for, to collaborate with Ocoy for a water line. So that, that type of thing has been included to make application for it. Dunbar. So this is an example. It has some similarities with Bradley County, where they, you have, you know, and this is a made-up county of Dunbar. It's been given, in this case, they're saying $3 million with a co-funding level of 15%, okay? They don't operate a drinking or a wastewater system, but they're served by four different utility districts. The county may apply to TDEC for a grant that includes projects from all four different utilities for drinking water and wastewater. And then it talks about, here's the amount, you've got the 3 million, plus you've got the 15% for co-funding. And so that's, that's just an example of the way Bradley County could do it. You could have multiple projects with multiple utilities, and it's all part of this application that we would be working The second bullet down, TDEC recommends partners' utilities contribute 15% to the project financially or through activities executed to qualify as a collaborative partner. So for example, back to our, if there's a water line in Ocoy Utilities District and that the county decides, we wanna put a water line on this road. We've got a lot of residents, they don't have water. Well, Ocoy's gonna be getting a water main. Now, they have to operate, you know, they have to maintain it and operate it, but they're getting a water main and some customers, so the county can, and this is part of the coordination that would be done with them, is to ask them to contribute to the project. And so you try to get all that worked out during this application process so you know how much they're gonna contribute, again, to save the county some money. Just a detail for you guys to be aware of, there is an infrastructure scorecard that each utility has to prepare. It basically looks for deficiencies with things like the maintenance of their system, if they have a high water loss percentage, that type of thing. And if they do, TDEC says, well, if you're gonna take funds, you've gotta put at least a small percentage towards these types of projects. So again, during the coordination with a utility, if one of these types of things are identified, we bring it to the surface and bring it back to the county and let you know what that, Okay. So just some things that are required during the application process. The third, third bullet down, a letter of support and commitment of funds from all entities identified. That's kind of what we talked about. Coordinate with the utilities and get that taken care of. You know, the proposal timeline, preparing the maps, updating the budget. Budgeting's very important. When you provide the budget in the application, prices are very high. And so you wanna provide, put some contingencies in there. There's some ways that you can apply for it where, you know, you wanna make sure you shoot a little high because if the project costs more than you have budgeted, they're not gonna fund it, right? So you wanna shoot high on your price, but then you also wanna try to use all the funds you can. So if a project comes in lower than what you budgeted, you may be able to include some line items that you can add on to the project. So we wanna be as smart as we can, use all the money that we can, and use the county's money efficiently. So just, just some thoughts to keep in mind. But we do have to provide a budget on the front end. You can schedule. And then also, very importantly, all of the work has to be completed in the ground by September 30th of 2026. And that's a little under three and a half years away. That's doable, but it's fast. So you, the steps are, you submit the application. If approved, you prepare the final engineering plans and permit applications. Get all of the state, federal approvals for that. Bid the project publicly. Contractor goes to work, and get it done by that date with delivery of materials being delayed and that kind of thing. Again, it's doable, but it's, it's not a lot of extra wiggle room. So I just wanna make y'all aware of that. That's a general overview of the program. Gary will try to address the questions that you raised, and then we'll answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Adam. Yeah, first of all, just as Adam said, this, this is the county's application. Funds do not flow to the utilities. They don't flow, they flow to you and from you to the utilities. And there's a lot of work that they have to do. You have the application, the overall application, and managing the funds flow. They have a lot of... They have a lot of things to do. He mentioned that these scorecards that they have put together, there's programs they've got to develop themselves, asset management plans, there's, so there's a lot of strings to this, and a lot of those will apply to the utilities. So they're going to have a lot to do. So that's why they're not going to really want to step up and do the application. They have enough to do on their own for the projects that would be funded through them. To get to Commissioner Hughes' question on why are we doing this again? We're not doing the same thing again, it's different than the master plan. A master, for example, a master plan identified a number of projects based on needs. We took input from developers, we took input from the public. And based on all of that, we identified these, there was over $16 million of wastewater projects and over $22 million of water projects, not counting the septic system program. But to try to, we did preliminary rankings on this, but to try to narrow those down, because we can't fund all of those, fund a portion of them with this program, we have to have some more input from the people who, say, are on the road. As Adam brought up, we don't want to build a water line on a road out there if the people really, after you put it out there, the people are really not that interested in. You know, we had public input coming in here, a lot of it was on septic, not a lot on other individual roads and streets. We did get some, but much of it was septic-related issues. Many of you were here for those. And so we've got to narrow it down now. So we've identified a number of water and wastewater projects. And we're going down the list now, we need to find out, are people really interested in that? Are developers interested in actually doing it before we spend the money to do that particular project? So there's a lot more fine tuning to take those, that long list of needs of projects down to, well, which ones should we actually do with this money? So about half of the additional funds on this amendment are directly directed to try to narrow that list down to get to that point. The rest of it is going mainly towards putting the application together, coordinating with utilities. So that's, I hope, does that sort of answer what you, hopefully? But we're not redoing what we did, we're, it's fine tuning it down now to which areas are people really most interested in. We may have identified a need that road doesn't have a water line, but if the people there are really not interested in that water line, you know, maybe we should spend our money somewhere else where people are. And so that's what a lot of that survey work is about. To follow up on your attorney's comments about the negotiation Cleveland Utilities, this was one of the questions y'all came up with at the last work session, was that Cleveland Utilities currently prohibits, they do not accept wastewater from outside the city. And so, Ocoee Utilities District does, they already do. We don't have that same issue with them that we have with Cleveland. So a number of the wastewater projects were to send that wastewater to Cleveland. Now, if they don't take it, we can always build a treatment plant, but the most expeditious and easiest way is to send it to Cleveland. So the point of the negotiation is to work out a way where Cleveland would be willing to accept that wastewater, because we think that's the best way for it to do. But that's why we anticipate some fairly significant negotiations with them to overcome that prohibition. We've talked to them, we think there's a way to do it, and so that's what we'd like to try to do with that portion of this additional money here. So those are a couple of major things. We did some cleanup elsewise in the amendment, but the two major things, the questions we wanted to answer was a negotiation issue. We are going to coordinate with all these others, but it's not negotiation in the same sense to overcoming this sewer prohibition for Cleveland. So we don't anticipate issues with them. Certainly want to work with them on projects. Now, Cleveland's going to get their own pot of money, they've got their own pot of money. So for projects in Cleveland, they'll do those. It's just the utility districts, we're going to have to come through the county. And so certainly work with any of them. I think most of the lines, most of the water and sewer lines that we identified as needs are in Ocoee or Cleveland Utilities service areas. So, you know, it's not to the exclusion of the other utilities. It just so happens that the lines that we identified as needs are primarily in those two entities. And those are the ones we focus on, of course. Ocoee is good to work with, and we're anticipating problems, you know, in doing that. So we look forward to including projects they may have in there on this. And the water project from Hiawassee, I know they've got a project as well. So, you know, we look forward to getting started on this, the time is short. And we want to make sure we get everything in that's needed for a fully, you know, a full application by the deadline on that. And that's really what this is, that's really what this is intended to try and do. And it's good that, as Adam mentioned, that much of this appears like the amendment as well as a good portion of the master plan is going to be reversible through this program. So those are the main comments that I have on that. I'll be glad to answer any others that you might have. I'm trying to see if I have any.
Mr. Slater, and Mr. Blake, and then Mr. Havers.
So what is your history with negotiating and collaborating, which are words that you use in your document, with Cleveland Utilities? Do you have a successful track record working with Cleveland Utilities? You mentioned Ocoee, that they were easy to work with or good to work with, but what is your history with Cleveland Utilities?
Our company's been working with Cleveland Utilities probably for the last 30 years. Still have projects going on with them, so we work with them almost on a daily basis. Not on this specific issue here, but in terms of just working with them. You know, we don't, you know, we know the people, and we've already talked to them about this issue. We think there's a way forward, and based on those conversations. So we think we can flesh it out, and so that, we're fairly confident on that. I mean, there's no guarantee, but, I mean, because ultimately it's got to go from, if Cleveland Utilities agrees to it, still got to go to Cleveland City Council, they were the ones who actually put the prohibition in place.
It's interesting that you use the word flush in your comments, but I also find it interesting that you think it's doable, and Commissioner Pink says in the conversations that she's had, she doesn't think it's doable, so.
I didn't say that recently. Recently, we've been having conversations that it's, recently, we've been having conversations that they are opening up to the idea.
For sewer.
Yeah, last year, it was completely off.
And then, would we be able to get a copy of your presentation, please, that you've just showed today?
Lori has both PDFs, and Lori, can you provide that?
I will.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blake.
And I want to, there's also, there's, on the TDEC website, and we can send a link, there's a, it's a four-hour workshop, but you can go through it, and that's where these slides are from, and they talk more in depth about it. And I'll send Lori that link.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of questions, if I may, kind of the same lines as Commissioner Slater. This application process that you're going to potentially do for us, are you doing this for the other municipalities, any other counties in the state of Tennessee?
Not currently.
Are you talking to any other counties to do the same? Oh, yeah, because if, kind of the scale, and you see something that they have or they shouldn't do, you'll benefit and vice versa, so to speak.
Where our company itself is working with a number of communities in southeast Tennessee, they're all going after this money.
So, okay, that's good, that's good. When we agreed to do this plan, and I've had a lot of fun reading this plan, trust me, we had no idea that we were going to get federal money. Remember, this was pre-COVID. We were sitting up here like, when that plan comes, how are we going to do, kind of stuff? Obviously, we got the funding on this. I guess my question is this, we only have, like you said, six and a half million that we have here, I guess that we earmarked in these multiple buckets. That's not near what your plan has. So in other words, if we were to do all this plan, we would still need more money, right?
If you did every project, yes. So you have six and a half from the first bucket, and I think seven and a half from the second one. So there's a fair amount of total money. So, yeah, without that, if there are other projects, we identified a number of other potential funding sources, and most of those are competitive funding sources, but you would have had to go look at those other potential funding sources, yeah.
So last week, this commission voted to earmark $750,000 towards the septic failure. And please understand, if I'm concerned that this application isn't going to address that, can you address that concern? I mean, because if I understood your previous comments earlier, this septic failure and addressing that with corrective action or anything like that is not part of this discussion, if you will.
Sure, that's a good question. The creation of the program administration, in other words, there has to be some way, how are you going to administer a septic tank program? And who's going to do that here at the county? If you're going to have someone administer it here, who's going to do it? Your staff to do that. How are you going to decide who's eligible? How are you going to handle the reimbursement? What kind of limitations are you going to put on that? And then who's going to handle the flow of the money over time? All of that setup of that program is really not part of the application, that's why we didn't put it in here. We realize it has to be done. And we're suggesting that you earmark a portion of the total money for that program. It could be some percentage, could be 6%, 7%, 8% for that administration, create the program and administer the program. So that's what we're suggesting on that. Yeah, we realize it is, it's either when it's in the first pot of money or the second part of the pot of money. We're suggesting you put line items for that in this application.
And the reason why we did that last week is because it's a priority of ours and a service, and hopefully that doesn't get left out.
But you could also use money from that, $750,000, you could also use a portion of that to do this very thing. I mean, there's a portion of it that's going to be going to bricks and mortar, to fix things, but you also have to administer the program. There's a small percentage of that cost that you could use to administer.
But there's nothing that the state, I mean, you're right, if I understand it correctly, and please don't come wrong, right now, you're going after new sewer lines. That's, if I'm interpreting what you're.
No, it's, it could be.
The seven and a half million that we've heard about 100 times now, it is for new sewer lines.
It could be sewer lines, water lines, it could be a septic program, whatever you all want to find out of that.
Whatever we want to find out, so we've got à la carte, we've got things to choose from, right?
Correct.
I guess now I want to chat a little bit about the timeline. So when you were putting in your application, do you have to at least give a ballpark figure as to these timelines? The reason I even ask that is because I work in the project world as well, totally different business, but projects is, I got a statement of work and a timeline, and a project manager will call me every other day, ask me for updates and stuff like that. It would make sense to me if we broke these up into smaller pieces, so that if a completion of a project is all that the feds are looking for, that project A, whatever it is, gets done, then project B starts, or they run in parallel. So in other words, you don't have one big long project that perhaps has the potential of not being completed by these hard deadlines, that they are broken up into pieces, so you say, yeah, we did one, two, and three, maybe we didn't get to four. You see what I'm saying? Because in other words, you're putting yourself in the best position of being successful with respect to the line, the deadlines.
Correct. And see, all these projects are going, each one of them is going to have a timeline. So, and will they be overlapping? Probably, many of them are overlapping, they won't be sequential. So, yeah, and the timeline that's just laid out, of course, has to make sure that they get through by that date in September of '26. But, yeah, there'll be timeline, that's part of the application, is to come up with what's the timeline for these various projects that we want to do.
So one of the other concerns I have, and I seem like I got a lot of, it's kind of the same one we talked about with broadband. You got 95 counties in the state of Tennessee and other, and everybody's going to be going and asking for this money, that's good. But then you need all these engineers and architects and all that kind of stuff, and there's only a certain amount of them, there's only a pool of them, so to speak. In other words, you're going to have a lot of demand for a little bit of supply on the knowledge of people who know how to do this. Have you guys taken that into consideration, that you, they're going to be put on the bottom pile, or you're, we'll get to you in four months kind of stuff, you know what I'm saying?
I understand. And it is a challenge. It's going to be a challenge, for example, when you go to construction, all this money nationwide is going to hit the, say, utility contractors, and to, there's only so many for that to go around. We're concerned about that. We're concerned about the materials. But the sudden demand of all this money, trillions of dollars, hitting the supply chains, it's a valid question. And engineering-wise as well, planning-wise, so, yeah, we are taking that into account. I mean, we're committing to you to have the applications in by the deadline. And we can work out timelines on the projects. The utilities are going to be heavily involved in that. Some of the utilities have their own engineers, and so they're going to be involving those engineers to actually implement the projects with the county. So, you know, there's a lot of players that will be involved in it. We'll be representing you in terms of the application itself and the collaboration with the utilities, but they may come along and say, okay, we're, you know, we agree to this project, they want to use their engineer on that project, I mean, that's fine. I mean, we'd be happy to work with them, but many of them have their own, they have their own engineers.
I'm sure you thought about the labor pool of people who, engineers and all the people who make this happen, whether it's water, sewer, what have you, I mean, the drain, all that. Last question, if you may. I think some of us had an eye-opening experience not too long ago, when this commission room was full of people, and they didn't really want zoning to be approved. And it was all, I would say all because, but a few years ago, we put, we funded with the help of some grants out there at Taylor Ellon Marine Trains. I can only anticipate that that's going to happen again, when new sewer lines go through all parts of our county and stuff like that. You mentioned earlier that you're going to solicit input from residents and how they feel, whether they would tap in. I mean, I just, I guess my question would be, have you considered the environment that we're in right now, whether not everybody wants sewer? I'm sure you heard that during your.
We heard that, sir.
But we, I say, I'm only speaking for myself, I saw it firsthand on two or three meetings that, I was speaking on the sewer piece, this isn't the most popular thing going on right now. You're going to, because the application part, I mean, what would they have to say? Yeah, we don't want it?
Well, we heard a lot of figures. One of the things we did here was that we don't want, certainly don't want sewer out of what are called rural account portions of the county, and that none of the lines that we looked at planning go into those portions of the county. So on the sewer side, and this is the same as on the water, we, what we don't want to do is put a line out there and have people say, we don't want that line, and we're not going to tap into it. And why would we spend the money, even though there, it appears there's a need, maybe bad septic issues along that road? So we say, okay, this is a need, and appears to be a high priority need. But again, if the people are not going to want it, that's part of this survey information we're getting. We need to know that. I don't want to put the, you don't want to put the sewer line out there and have people, you know, not avail themselves of it, because we could put the money somewhere else.
Well, that raises an interesting question, I apologize, Mr. Chairman, is that when you, and I'm really thinking new sewer lines, and I know this, you just answered a previous question about more, but the sewer lines are not just for existing homes already. Obviously, developers are going to see that, you know, if we have a housing shortage, so to speak, you know, and more housing ideas and all that, so it's going to be a combination of both, right?
Yes, and then part of our survey thing is to go back to the developers on that particular road, and say, okay, there's some tracks on this road, you guys, you guys have stepped up the plate, is this something that you consider being developable? Yeah, so we're planning that, the survey's planning to contact both the residents as well as interested developers to see just how much interest there is.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Havers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to point out, Gary, when you did the master utility plan and you proposed five or six locations for sewer, and I asked this question before, and I just wanted to, and you didn't touch on this, but those locations were kind of, to come up with those locations, one of the major factors of that was where, was the major septic tank failures and things, was that part of your decision-making to try to, when you did the master utility plan?
Correct.
Yeah, that's why, I just wanted to make sure that got out there. And then when this line goes in there, say, if you propose two lines, but what we did with water, you proposed some water lines, we proposed, and you know that the septic tank repairs, the second important thing to this condition. And then say we do two or three lines to keep in that timeframe, those would be areas that wouldn't, that, say, a thousand feet goes in, and then anyone that had septic tank. septic tank failures, they would hook into that line. And then, like you said, with developers, you hope that they get involved, because when you, if we, if the county uses its funds to set them up, meaning to put in a thousand feet, we would hope that the, and then, too, this is how it usually works, and I'm wondering if, you know, and I'm sure that it would work if this, say, a developer purchases a piece of property a half mile down the road, and he has, you know, has to put in an extra amount of feet of sewer line that that was already there, that, that they, you know, these funds paid for, and then that line is paid by the developer, then the, all the lines and all the infrastructure leading to that, water lines, sewer lines, is paid by the developer, not the taxpayer. And then, everything within that plan development is paid by the developer, because a lot of people don't understand how all that works, that they think that it's the taxpayers that pay for this, actually, the developers. And then, those lines that the developer pays for and not the taxpayer, goes by other houses that are having septic tank failures, because you've identified these septic tank, or sewer lines in, in the most failed areas of our county where septic tank failures are occurring. But we would hope that those developers would come in and participate in, and then help, hopefully, keep our affordable housing problems under, you know, or help towards achieving, trying to solve that problem. So, I just wanted to point that out.
That's correct. I mean, we, we, when we, when we laid out some of the sewer lines that we recommended, there was a couple of things. One was septic tank, you know, the, the, just the density of septic tank issues in that area. The other was, you know, we need affordable housing, which means we need people that sewer can provide affordable housing, because you can reduce the lot size down, and get, and get, in a given area, you can get more houses. So that was one of the things. And it's also why in the survey we're proposing to do as part of this, is that certainly we're going to go back to developers on those, those roads that we identified as, as needs from the standpoint of sewer, both the, the septic, as well as the residents themselves, as well as the developers.
Commissioner Rick?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to go back to the more, and look at the line of failing sewer systems. Do we have an identification process? You described an identification process as far as sewer in the whole county. Do we have one that specifically targets failing sewer systems, and then a priority list, like, I'm going to give you an example of them. If you, if you have wastewater in your backyard servicing, that would take precedent over something else, so, do, do we have something like that, that we could possibly put in place?
We don't have that. You're, you're speaking more to the, what I call the septic tank program itself. How are you going to prioritize, you know, who's going to be eligible? That's part of that program that I, I mentioned earlier, was, is still to be created, that fleshing out the details of that. The doing of that is, we think, is eligible under this to be funded. But to do what you're talking about right now, that has not yet been done. We, we can identify areas where there are failing systems. The state TDEC has already, has already, we have a map that shows, just in general, there was, there was a large number all over the county. They're focused in certain areas, and those are the areas we were hoping to be able to look at some of the sewer lines. But there are, there are failing systems all over the county. There, they may be, they may be more in certain areas, but they're all over the county. We kind of know where those are. But when you set up a program, you're going to have to kind of program a figure of how to solicit applications from residents, and how are you going to screen those, prioritize those, that has still got to be set up.
Will you set that up, or do we set it up, or are we, it's sort of in a combination?
I think it'll be a combination. There's also some help, there's a Southeast Tennessee Local Resource Development Council that has done some of this. And, so, I think there's a program, kind of a go-by program, that can be used for that, so, yeah.
And, two more things, and you can even do this with yes or no. This is a little bit more targeted, Mayor. Mayor, you, you had described earlier about the funding that we would be getting for water, and I think you labeled that as more of state funding instead of federal government funding. This seven and a half million doesn't, they don't overlap, am I, or is that totally separate, that what you were referring to earlier? And I don't mean today, in the past.
This is the bucket that, early on, I said there will be another bucket coming late. I think the amount changed somewhat. But early on, when I presented you the six buckets...
Yes, sir.
Originally, I had a seventh one on there that was going to be coming from the state at a later date, and that's the one they've turned into this grant that is, that's being talked about here now, yes.
Okay, that, that helps me. And, and one last question for any of you. You said again, and I just wanted to make sure that I heard this correctly, if we, if the commission decided to go ahead and do this, and, and, and invest into this, then basically 90 to 100% of this is reimbursable, am I, am I correct in saying that?
Yes, our understanding is that you're talking about the master plan costs and such.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that, that, I think the number was around 56,000 of the, of the original amount, plus all of this amendment here, our understanding would all be eligible under the, under the TDEC funding.
Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I want to add one thing, Kevin, because it's been mentioned about the match. It's not been addressed yet on this one, but anytime we've done CDPG one-line grants or whatever, we always require the utility to provide that match, it's never cost Bradley County anything, and that will be our goal in this one, is to get them, whichever utilities involved, they'll take care of the match.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rick, for Commissioner Cryer, and Commissioner Thompson, and Commissioner Hughes.
Uh, thank you very much. I'll, I'll make a full disclosure to you, I don't want sewer lines running all over Bradley County that's outside the city limits, so I'll start with that premise right there. We are in the 21st century, as I've said several times, we have a considerable number of people in Bradley County that don't have public water. They're out in rural areas, pasture fields, rower houses, what have you. The water is healthy today, but it leaches through and is unhealthy maybe tomorrow or the next day. So it's important, even though they might not want, might not want to connect, it's important that they have the availability of that public water to connect. And I, I have an issue, I know you've worked great with Cleveland Utilities and that's good, but to go back to, I think Commissioner Slater's earlier comments, the Cleveland Utilities works great if you're within that boundary line, economic growth, or whatever they call it, but they have the responsibility to go beyond that, and they normally refuse to go beyond that, to service those areas outside the, those boundaries. So we have people out there, if we don't take care of them, or not ever going to get public water while, while we're on the commission. The next issue I have, really, I guess, is with the mayor. Outside of sewer, can't we go ahead and get grants, they have their own engineers, most of them do, on water, and, and septic, we've got set aside already, $750,000 to make sure they didn't get shafted out of anything, and maybe we, we can get the water without going through all these models that we're listening to on grants, is that possible?
We can include, once we decide, if you, let's say, for example, you don't want to do any sewer with this money, it could be water, but then we also have the water bucket to refer to, so we can go to Ocoy Utilities, we've got to put together a plan for this money first, get that plan out there, and it could be water. I'd probably be a little bit of both, as far as Ocoy Utilities is concerned. High Wasty, that would all be water. And then, we come back with the water bucket and address more water lines in the future. Cleveland, I think, will work with us on the water lines if we're willing to pay a big percentage of it outside the city, it's the sewer that's the issue. But they're willing to do the water, Ocoy's willing to do the water, and High Wasty Utilities is willing to upgrade, so that they both can do more water. But we can use it out of both buckets, the state grant bucket that we're talking about, and the bucket we've already set aside. Is that...
I, I think you've added some clarity to it. I, I think we need to take care of these homeowners that have septic problems, I've walked around backyards, as Commissioner P and Commissioner Anderson have for many years. As an appraiser, I always had to walk around the yard and check the septic system out there, and I agree with what you gentlemen have said, we have a serious problem out there. These backyards have dark green spots all over the place, and, plus the, the fluid coming to the surface. But we have set aside 3/4 of a million on that, but that might not be enough, from several people that have said that. Thank you very much, I just wanted to throw my comments in there.
Thank you, Commissioner Cryer, Commissioner Thompson.
I guess, probably, Commissioner Cryer, probably on the same line I was thinking, and I appreciate him asking those questions. Of course, I know for a fact that we don't have a, a good reputation, or a, or a good road with the city when it comes to talking about sewer and water. And they want to stay within their limits, and that's fine, that's reasonable, we've got people like Ocoy and High Wasty, and people like that that want to put water and sewer in. One question I would like to ask is, you said Cleveland Utility would accept or would not accept their sewer, and if not, then we'd have to build a, like, we'd have to build our own treatment plant, or Ocoy Utility, or whoever, and of course, Ocoy's the only one I, I, I think at this point is doing any sewer. And, so my question is, is if the city does agree to accept their sewer and do some water outside the city limits, are we, are we going to be in a fistfight with them about annexation? And, and that's, that's something I'd really be concerned about, that I don't know how they've answered that question about acceptance, sewer, whatever, but I just wondered if that question was ever brought up about, it probably wasn't, but I'm sure it would be, if, if they did that, well, there'd be some questions about annexation.
I don't think in the, in the projects we're looking at are going to be contingent on annexation, that's not the way that we were, we were doing these. What, in the, in the master plan, what we've already indicated, is that if there's property close to city limits, say of Cleveland, that's within their urban growth boundary, if it's developed, or they'll just go ahead and ask for annexation, they'll annex it, and that way, you can get the sewers that way. Most of these projects here are outside of that, they're either not right next to Cleveland, or they're out there, they're outside of the urban growth boundaries. So, if they're outside the urban growth boundaries, they're, they're not even, annexation probably won't even come up. So we're not anticipations, we're not anticipating certainly that these, there's going to be any quid pro quo with all these projects, where we might do a project to, to send either sewer to Cleveland, or extend water in their service area outside their city limits. I don't, that's not the plan of this. Now, would that, would that promote annexation requests in the future? I guess it could, but if you're outside the urban growth boundary, there's other things they'd have to do even to be able to annex that area, and most of these projects are.
Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, a, a lot of the conversation today has been about TDEC, and I have been questions about septic system from Commissioner Ray or under Commissioner Cryer. There are actually two officials from TDEC that do the septic systems here. I, I don't know if they are willing to speak with us about some of these questions, or if they'd rather have that, I don't know. But anyway, they are Mark Gillard and Megan Platch is here, I hope I said that correctly. And I think they've got an answer for some of the things that have been brought up, and I know that several of us have text with links and things of that nature, so, with that, if you guys are, want to speak on any of these questions that are asked, or, or was asked?
Just ask the questions, and we will be happy to answer those.
Okay. Commissioner Ray, for what was the questions you were asking earlier?
If you, if one of you will come up here, I don't care which one, draw, draw, draw.
As you're walking up here, and within time, I'll, I'll go ahead and ask, but mine was more on the failing septic system. He had talked about more of a broad plan, that do we have a plan that would prioritize needs as far as failing sewer systems? And, you know, and I gave the example of, we got raw sewage coming out from the backyard, that would take precedent over, you know, just toilets stopping up every now and then, or, you know, you may even have worse case scenarios. Do we have something like that, or can we put it in place?
So to answer the first part, I think, you know, I think our idea and our stance was that it's really best left up to Bradley County to determine that criteria, or, you know, what to allocate towards that. I think that's, you know, in our opinion, I think that was, you know, best to leave to Bradley County, how they want to do that. Number two, I sent some numbers and some analyses, I think it was about two years ago, or a year and a half ago.
Yeah.
Was it a year and a half? I think it wasn't. So I sent them some numbers, just giving an idea of where, you know, where the most repair permits are issued or applied for in certain quadrants of the county. So I took it from northwest, you know, northeast, and so on, so, and broke it down that way statistically as well. So, just to see where these were occurring, and if they were occurring by chance, or were they, you know, was there some, you know, reason, or, you know, was it true that in certain parts of the county, there were, you know, more repairs or failures than other parts of the county?
And, and just one comment is this, is I know different places, I've actually visualized these, we have people that are ready to abandon their house, they've had septic tanks pumped out a number of times, they're out of money, they have no options, so, I mean, it goes on and on, but...
Sure.
And tho, those kind of issues are my greatest concern, you know, we're not a third world country, we, we've got to address these, these failing sewer systems that we're talking about. Thank you.
Mr. Gillard, just a quick question. When a repair permit is issued, is typically at its worst at that point, because it's, there's been a repair permit issued, is, am I wrong on that, or am I correct in my understanding?
Well, when a repair permit's issued, obviously it has to be failing, in one way or another. The last thing that we try to do on a piece of, any piece of property, or the way I approach it, is we don't want to add field lines unless we absolutely have to. And that's for number one, the cost to the homeowner, you're, you know, to conserve land, so it's very important to try to fix it without doing that, but in some cases, yes, that's all we have left to do. You know, and then, and then there's other issues, once that happens, there's other issues that arise, such as, you don't have enough room to do it, there's, there's no room to do it. And so those can be sometimes those properties that continuously had issues, where, you know, funds would not help, I mean, because there's nowhere to put a septic system in, literally, on some properties, but, and very few, to be honest with you. But there are some that are really difficult, they'll...
And my last question, I, I'm lame when it comes to this, okay, so you're explaining everything to me. When you say failing system, what exactly means a system is failing?
Well, for, for me, it's, and for the state, it's either it's bleeding out on the ground, discharging effluent or sewage on the ground, or it's backing up into the home continuously, causing it, you know, being a potential health hazard.
I understand, so, for me, that would be the worst-case scenario. Thank you.
Mr. Al.
Yes, I've asked this question several times to our engineers too, but looking at, Mr. Blake here has the map of all the failing systems supposedly in Bradley County right now.
Is this one out here?
Uh, I'm not sure if you put that, or have them put that together, or if they put it together on their own.
Use my numbers. Yeah. So, so, Mr. Gillard...
Well, I guess my question, and, and my concern is that we've got a lot of money here to put into septic systems. And looking at the maps, I think, what causes septic systems to fail in Bradley County at this number? I understand that some places you can't put in field lines... I understand that some places you can't put in field lines, or enough field lines, don't have the property to put in field lines. And is there any other alternative, if you can't repair the septic system, what's a person going to do? Do they, is there any other options? We could spend tons and tons of money on septic systems, but if they can't be repaired, what are their options?
Obviously, to install field lines for a septic system, suitable soil has to be present on the property. And so...
What if a person doesn't have enough property to do it?
That's where it gets very difficult. And, and oftentimes, what happens is we have to go back into the existing system and repair it where it's at, which is, you know, never a great idea. But that's, that's your only option, is to go back in and replace what's there in the soil that's been used.
So that's a gigantic sum of money probably, isn't it?
Yes, well, it's an expense to the homeowner, but it's also an expense that may or may not work. You know, so, yeah. So that, that's where, you know, on really small lots, and a lot of that cluster is, is where those are.
Real small lots, aren't we?
Yeah.
They don't have room to expand their field lines.
So, yeah, but if there's no suitable soil present, you know, it's difficult for, you know, for us to issue a, a permit. Or we can, and they go right back into the same soil that has already been used, which, you know, again, is a flip of the coin, you know, whether or not it'll work.
So we've allocated seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward septic tanks at this point in time anyway. You did the math, per se, kind of helped with them, will that even come to close?
Uh, I don't, I don't know. I'm not sure on that.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Pete, and then to Mr. Epperson.
Thank you, Mr. Diller, for coming. Two hours, that you could have, I'm glad you are here, but that's two hours, you're two weeks behind time table on some of our requests.
That's right.
And then another thing these people have to do is continually pump their tanks. If there's no other resolution, all they can do is just continue to pump their tanks until they have sewer in front of their house to tap onto, technically, if it's at the worst-case scenario at that time. Thank you, Mr. Diller, for coming. My other comment was for the forced annexation issue, just so everybody continues to know and have this knowledge, there is no forced annexation. There is a law against forced annexation. So if anybody wants to be annexed, they can request annexation if they're close to it, but you cannot force annexation on anybody, even if it's in the urban growth boundary area. The city cannot force annexation. That's my only comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Epperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to say, you were talking about the, uh, service lines, the, or the land, and, and the intensity of these lots that are on this map that the engineers put together with your help. I mean, the other option would be is hopefully that maybe, oh, their only option would be, would be a, maybe a potential sewer line going in front of those properties, obviously. Would it not?
Well, I mean, obviously, that would greatly help, you know, but, like I said, you know, in some, some lots, we can issue permits to go right back into the same existing trenches. Again, it's not ideal, but we can do that. So it's not like, you know, if they didn't have se- I mean, it wouldn't be the end of the world, is what I'm saying. We can still issue permits to go back in. So it's not as if we're just going to walk away and be like, oh, well, you know...
But it's not a guarantee that that system would be...
No, it's not.
Any other questions?
Could someone just summarize for me what we're... We, we are deciding with this work session to deal with thirty-five thousand dollars, give them the right to do preparation for a full application. Correct? That's what this meeting is about. We have to deal with all of this right now. Then you're going to be looking at all the, how to answer all the things we're putting into this plan that we're giving you the opportunity to do, right?
Yes, as far as the application.
So the thirty-five thousand is to put you all to work to answer this, to put it in the plan.
Be able to use, be able to use all that money that you're able to...
Thank you, Mr. Diller. Appreciate you coming today.
Sure, thank you.
Just one comment from our discussion of this, is, uh, it, it sounds like timeliness is everything here, and, uh, we don't have an abundance of it. Some of us are leaving, um, for one reason or another, but one of the things I want to say is, is, uh, whatever means we need to, we need to hurry and start developing a priority list of, whether they're call-ins, whether we advertise to the public through media, I don't know, but, uh, we need to, in a very timely manner, get these out to the people that are, have failing septic systems and they respond to, so...
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Could I just add to that? Here, since I haven't spoken in a whole... You said in your presentation that you had a district or two that had a model for this, correct? A model for how to make this decision? Did y'all say that, or did I just forget? Some, some districts are doing that priority...
Not so much the district, this is, this would be a, a, I call it planning council, but Southeast Tennessee, I think it's called it, National Resources Development Council, has dealt with this before, and so we think there's probably a go-by that they, that they have used on how they do it.
There is a model out there.
We think there is, yes. And, and so rather than creating, you know, having to create another one, we'll obviously borrow from whatever's already out there. And it's quite likely that, uh, other jurisdictions, you're not the first to deal with this, so, you know, search other jurisdictions. There's probably already programs that you could borrow from that would get you well down that road.
Last question. I had, the only concern, and maybe I just needed clarification, this study that we're looking at, that you are talking about then, is or is it not going to set up the criteria for this septic repair? I've heard no, but I, I want to make for sure that I'm being correct.
The application does not do that.
So this does not cover that portion of it?
That, yeah, this covers the application, which will include, which on the line items to do the very thing you're talking about.
I understand what you're saying, that line items didn't want, that grant would cover that. However, the criteria is one of the things that we, we were needing set up also, and it's the one thing that I've heard everybody talk about that's here, so that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, it has to be created.
If they ever take another survey or another payment to get that sort of, or the criteria set up.
It would, yes, it would, it would be funded through the program, but it would be a separate task, it would not be part of the application. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Hues, and Mr. Pete.
So final on that, whether or not, it doesn't matter who does the criteria, we have to have the criteria done. And none of us are professional enough to get this criteria together, nor do we have the administrative time, hour, or power to administrate it. So we have to have someone do it, so we got to pay somebody. So like you were saying, we have to allocate administration fees and someone to make this criteria, because we, you want to make a mistake and get sued on the criteria, that we can, but I, I don't want to be part of that. Uh, so we have to have somebody implementing, no matter what, but the application for the state, that is not included in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pete. Moving into item two.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to go ahead and thank everyone.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, is there any more questions? No, there's not. Okay. I'd just like to go ahead and thank them for coming tonight, and, uh, and all the questions answered, and, uh, and also, Chris, I'd like to thank you for coming and sitting in this long meeting and doing the, or talking about the resolution and preparing it together. Um, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and put that on the next voting session, because the time is of the essence.
Item B, Commissioner Pete.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, mine's simple. Uh, we've got all this high-tech equipment that we have invested in, as you can see, at the top of the ceiling here and somewhere in the rear. Um, and a lot of us cannot attend all of the committee meetings, especially finance and different things. So instead of having, um, meetings at different locations, like, uh, anywhere other than this room, is not, I don't think, being transparent to our constituents or to the public. So we've had many requests that we have them in here and on live video. So I would request that we do that. I don't know how much input you have on this, I thought it would be pretty simple. If everybody wants to be transparent, they shouldn't have a reason, uh, to vote against it, but I want to put on the agenda next week, or the voting session, to have all committees meet in this room, and it also be broadcast live on our Bradley County government page, so that everybody can hear and see what's going on. I know the banner is always there to, uh, represent what goes on at these meetings, but some of us can't attend them, and I think that the public deserves to see everything that we do in all of our committees. So I'm putting that on the agenda for next week.
Mr. Blake?
So hypothetically, if we had an issue at EMS and building and grounds needed to meet, they could not go and meet at building and grounds?
Anything that you would do as a field trip, like when we go to an EMS building and we're walking around it, I know that can't be broadcast, but any kind of sit-down meeting, yes, I don't think that EMS should meet at EMS, I think EMS should meet in here. We had the road department that used to meet at the road department, and we squashed that and brought it in here. I don't know if they're still doing it here or not, but it makes no sense to have to go to that location to have the committee meeting because the public cannot be present. So I understand field trips, I'm not saying that. Um, just any committee that will go down, have a meeting and go and sit, needs to be in here, unless you're going to have a field trip.
Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in agreement, the transparency is, um, wonderful, and we should all strive for it. But my concern is the implementation of this. Who's going to, who's going to do the stuff like that? Right now, I believe it's the mayor's, uh, he has Adam handling all of that. I just know that in, especially in finance, the one I know, I'm very familiar with, Lori is the backup, should not have been on the full commission, but during finance, she's very busy taking care of a lot of other things, um, so I just want to make sure that we adhere to the rule if it passes, but, um, our Lori, uh, has got other things to do, so I just want to make sure we, or we, you know how we all love to jump into these things and we, you know, oh, by the way, kind of thing, because she's very busy with a lot of things that we ask her to do, so just addressing my concern.
Thank you. Mr. Pete?
I'm sure she's very busy, but she's also our right-hand woman, and I'm sure she could find the time during finance to come and do this implementation for the transparency of our constituents. They deserve that, so, um, it's, sometimes y'all meet an hour, sometimes two hours, but I'm sure we can come up with something, but I still think, no matter what, I mean, needs to be implemented.
Thank you, Mr. Pete.
I guess we'll vote over that the field have a field. City have a field. Well, that's what we did.
There's, there's a point in time where a juvenile meets, it's being juvenile, there's a time that it's not a field trip, but you're meeting there, where you got the information there, uh, to bring here, to set up, would be difficult. You're talking about the nursery home board, where two of us sat on as public meetings, and you sat on the, the city, city services board of the house? Just talking about our committee, just our committee, our standing committee. We're... Yeah. There's some that, that it's best to be at your facility that you're working with, so that would be, give us, you know, and I, I believe in transparency too, but we have a, we have a minutes open to present here.
Any other questions?
Chairman, I'll make this quick and then kind of explain that from now. This, uh, resolution to amend the Bradley County zoning resolution to create a R3 residential apartment district and an R4 residential mobile home park and travel trailer park district. What we have done in planning is that R2 had those two items in, and it's just to make them more clear, make clarification to the public, that's what is actually going in place. So in that case, we create an R3 for the apartment district, and also an R4 for the mobile home park and travel trailer park district.
Anyone have any questions about the two additional chapters?
So R2 will no longer include apartments or mobile homes or travel trailers or tents or...
No, it will not.
Or whatever.
Same home dwellings, which is, is what's going to cover residential, uh, which is, will be townhomes and single dwell. Yeah, that's it.
We have the question, Mr. Cryer?
This basically is just a refinement of the zoning regulations that currently exist. Is that correct?
Yes, it is, and before I end this, let me put this on the agenda for, to vote on.
Okay, so I, I guess my question goes around mobile home parks and, uh, travel trailer parks. Not too many people in my backyard, in your backyard, or their backyard wants one of those. So where we dealing with, I have a, I don't know, I guess my memory is slipping me, but I don't remember too much zoning in Bradley County that have trailer parks. Maybe we're, I, farming, if it's zone farming, uh, you can do anything you want, grow our houses, uh, trailer parks or ever, if you get the public to listen to you. But I, I just am curious, and you, you answered my main question, it's a refinement of the current zoning restrictions and everything still had to come before the public, to be clarified and approved, or listened to.
Yes, Mr. Cryer, no more than a clarification for people, it's transparency basically, where they'll, uh, they'll not have any questions whether an apartment complex or a mobile home park is coming in, once somebody requests an R2 zoning.
Commissioner Epperson?
One real quick question is this, um, I, I have no problem with the resolution at all, but, uh, what if somebody is on R2, but because of the new one, it goes to R3, do they automatically get moved over to there, or are they grandfathered in? What, what happens with those that will be transitioned from one to another?
It has to be re-...
Okay. Thanks, Ray.
That's a great question for, that's a bit of a question.
Thank you, thank you, Ben.
Any other questions about this? Commissioner Epperson?
I was going to comment on Kevin Rivers' comment there, um, is it, am I thinking, are you asking if, like, say, any, are there any flats that are out there, currently?
No.
Oh, okay, all right. I was going to say, the best of those are covered by this.
Right. Any other questions? No questions? Communication from the audience, anybody who wants to speak before the commission? And I'm grateful that you don't want to. Thank you. Next meeting, voting session Monday, May 16th, at noon here at the courthouse. Upcoming events, Rock Brothers Pie Center, crew graduation and showcase tomorrow at eleven o'clock, at 1,000 Vokor Boulevard. Education Committee will meet May 11th at 10:30 here in the commission room. Walker Valley graduation, May 12th, 7:30, Walker Valley High School. Tire cleanup, May 14th, 8:30, exit 20. And Ukrainian fundraiser and dinner, May 14th, 6 o'clock, at the Cleveland Church of Evangelical Faith. We are...